Can we have the roll call, please?
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Pete Cremon.
Here.
Ken Mann.
Here.
Sut Paul Sidoo.
Yes.
Carl Weimer.
Here. If people will stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a couple of announcements before we get going. If people have their cell phones with you, if you can put that on vibrate or silent, that'd be great so we don't hear lots of silly music going off during our meeting. Also, if during the public hearing or during the open public session, if you have handouts, it's really helpful if our clerk up front here can get a copy also. We just came out of a committee of the whole meeting that started at 6 o'clock. We had five items in the committee of the whole. One was an update on the Lake Watcom TMDL, the Total Maximum Daily Load, dispute resolution process that we're in right now. We also had a discussion regarding qualifications of applicants for the legislative analyst position that we are trying to hire. And we had a discussion about strategy, planning discussion, and position to be taken regarding collective bargaining. Our fourth one was the consideration of an appeal of the hearing examiner's decision on file number CUP 2009-0021 in LSS 2010-002 filed by Julie Carney and Michael Reed regarding the Lincoln Park Retirement Home Center. And I think someone has a motion. Does anybody have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we uphold the hearing examiner on this particular item.
All right, so we have a motion in front of us to uphold the hearing examiner on the Lincoln Park Retirement Home Center. Is there any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes six to one with Ms. Brenner opposed. And the other thing in Committee of the Whole was consideration of an appeal of the hearing examiner's decision on file numbers APL 2014-007, APL 2014-008, APL 2014-009, APL 2015-0002 filed by Ken and Charmaine Skeffer regarding a stop work order and alleged code violations for operating a commercial dog kennel Rover Stayover. And there was kind of multiple parts to this consideration. The first was a motion by the attorney that council members recuse themselves on this decision, so we're gonna, one by one, discuss whether we should recuse ourselves or not. Why don't we start down at your end, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, I've thought about the motion to recuse and do not believe that anything I may have seen or heard will prevent me from rendering a fair decision on this matter.
Mr. Chair, I also feel that I could be fair and impartial in this decision, that nothing that I've seen has influenced me beyond the record. Mr. Man?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make my decision based on the record that's in front of us, and I will be impartial, and that's how I will make my decision.
And I also will make my decision based on the record in front of us. I understand that I did receive some email chains, but I really have no recollection of those, so they don't change my opinion of this at all.
Well, I am gonna recuse myself. Just before we got the appeal, like, less than 24 hours before, I did meet with somebody who, I just thought we were meeting for tea, and he had a whole bunch of information, and we, you know, I didn't even realize we're getting it the next day, so I did go through it over with the stuff, and I went way too far, so I can't make a fair and impartial decision.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cremon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on my knowledge regarding this issue, I can be fair and impartial, and will be.
Mr. Sidoo.
Mr. Chair, I'm too new on the council, so I do not have much knowledge of this, so I will be fair in this decision.
All right. There is also a motion to strike a variety of information that had been entered, and I think Mr. Brown has got some motions for that.
Mr. Chair, I move that the motion to strike be granted in part specifically that: A) any evidence in the brief or exhibit A that is not in the hearing examiner record be stricken; B) the declaration of Charmaine Scheffer be stricken, exhibit B; Item C, declaration of Danan Traxler be stricken, that's exhibit C; Item D, exhibit C1 be stricken; and Item F, the Declaration, Item E, sorry, Declaration of Sidney Scheffer be stricken.
All right, so we have that, motion to strike those items. Is there any discussion or questions?
Well, if I'm recusing, it's for all of it.
Yes. All right. So, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Ms., whatever your name is, Brenner, recusing herself. I think we have the whole motion on the hearing examiner now. Mr. Brown?
And then, Mr. Chair, the motion is to uphold the hearing examiner's decision.
All right, so we have the motion to uphold the hearing examiner's decision on this issue in front of us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Ms. Brenner recusing herself again. And I know there's a lot of people here for this evening, the hearing examiner, we, basically our information that we've been talking about in the committee of the whole was that the hearing examiner properly found that this type of operation, which falls under the definition of a commercial kennel in the Watcom County Code, is not a permitted use in the ag zone where it is located. The Skeffers improperly operated this business, converted the use of their existing building impermissibly, and constructed a new building without proper permits from the county. That's what our decision upholds. So, that's that for this item. I know there's a lot of people, I suspect all the--
Boo! Boo! Boo!
I suspect all the green shirts are there. We're gonna, we're gonna take a three-minute recess before we start the rest of our business, so you people can get out if you don't wanna stay for the rest of our meeting. Thank you.
Where is the rights of the people?
We're adjourned. One more announcement before we get going. I always do a plug for one of our advisory committees that has openings in it, and we currently have an opening in the Planning Commission. The council's accepting applications for a vacant position on the Planning Commission. Applicants must live in Council District III, that's the district Barbara and I represent. The Planning Commission meets the second and fourth Thursdays every month. This is a partial term that ends January 31st, 2018. Applications are located at the back of the room for anyone who's here. Applications are also available in the county council office, on the council website, or we'll be glad to mail one to you if you're interested. We have two special presentations this evening. The first one is Executive Alaus is gonna present the 2015 State of the County speech.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, members of council, county employees, and citizens. It's my pleasure to be before you again to talk about the state of our county. I'd like to take a few minutes to briefly review our accomplishments, look at some of our challenges and opportunities for the future. First, our accomplishments in the last year. The Fire District Number Seven Emergency Medical Services Unit was fully integrated into the countywide system. The EMS Emergency Oversight Board and the Technical Advisory Board are working to consider future funding options for their operations. This funding challenge will need to be dealt with next year. The remodel of the courthouse was completed to accommodate our new fourth Superior Court Judge Raquel Montoya Lewis, who began hearing cases in January. The Information Technology Department has completed redesigning and upgrading our county data network to improve security and stability, preparing for the implementation of our new telecommunications system. The new telecommunications system project is extremely active right now, involving all of our county departments, and is scheduled for completion prior to the year end. The new website went live in March. The website reinforces our commitment to provide better access to our citizens for information. I'm very pleased that all contracts are now available for online viewing. A new recording system is contracted for and will be implemented in the auditor's office later this year. Our community also began its first-ever mental health court this past January, operating in the Watcom County District Court and the Bellingham Municipal Court. The program offers a comprehensive set of services designed to stabilize the symptoms of mental illness and provide recovery support to sustain stable mental health and a better life for the participants. The extent of these services is not provided in this manner in any other program, and the success so far is very encouraging. We have participants who are achieving successes in their personal lives that were previously unattainable by them, that previously were not attainable by them. As of January 1, the Watcom County Solid Waste Division was transferred from the Public Works Department to the Health Department. This allows the Health Department to focus more on recycling and education efforts to help us reach our 50% recycling goal. For example, this month we will be holding tire amnesty events in the East County where residents can drop off their old tires for recycling at no cost. Public Works projects in the past year include the completion of the improved signalization at the intersection of Birch Bay, Linden, and Portal Way, and we are well underway with the replacement of the Potter Road Bridge on the South Fork of the Nookzak River, scheduled for completion in 2015. Stormwater facilities and a channel restoration project were constructed at Coronado and Fremont Streets in Geneva to reduce phosphorus entering Lake Watcom. A new flood control levee and habitat restoration were constructed in the Canyon Creek near Glacier. In conjunction with the city of Bellingham and the Lake Watcom Water and Sewer District, a five-year, $47 million work plan was prepared and approved for protecting Lake Watcom. Human Resources completed the turnover report last week, and it shows that the net turnover separation rate dropped below 7% in 2014, which indicates stability in our workforce. With the new year and a new budget, recruitment activity year-to-date has doubled, and we've welcomed some great new talent to our organization. Watcom County traffic mitigation development standards were improved in collaboration with the Technical Standards Technical Advisory Committee. The Parks Department is currently planning for the future use of the reconveyance lands, and park facility reservations are now available online. Of significant note, not necessarily realized in just the past year, our juvenile court is seeking a marked, is seeing a marked reduction in offenders. In 1999, there were 1,927 arrests with the 10-17 age population, the age group most likely to be referred to the juvenile court. The most recent arrest data indicates 606 arrests in a 10-17 population of 1,925. More juveniles are being diverted than are being charged. The success of this can be attributed to our use of a validated risk assessment tool, employment of evidence-based programs in conjunction with a balanced and restorative approach to dealing with youthful offenders. The 2015-16 projects and programs that are underway include the initiation of a multi-year project in the Planning and Development Services to update the Watcom County Comprehensive Plan and conduct the urban growth area review by June 30 of 2016, as required by the Growth Management Act. This task is on track due in large part to the collaborative work being accomplished by the county and the cities. The Critical Areas Ordinance update is proceeding within, was proceeding within timeframe and budget. The administration anticipates that the council will hold hearings in April of next year, meeting the deadline of June 2016 adoption. A new code enforcement ordinance is being drafted for review by the council that consolidates land use, critical areas excluding shorelines, and life safety codes. This new ordinance, if adopted, will streamline and clarify the enforcement process and penalty assessments. We've also been engaged in the mediation process for several collective bargaining agreements. We believe the respectful exchange of ideas has resulted in viable solutions for our employees while remaining within the 2015-2016 budget authority. We hope to have all bargaining units settled soon. A system has been set up to provide and track the county's open government training program for roughly 350 board, commission, council, and committee members, and we have 40 certified public officials on staff, and there is a robust leadership training schedule planned for our employees in 2015, including additional support for developing leaders. Major public works projects being completed this year include traffic safety improvements on the Slater Road at Imhoff and Ferndale Road intersections. The turn lanes will be installed. The Portalway Bridge at Dakota Creek will be upgraded for seismic retrofits, and the Slater Road Bridge over the Nookzak River will be repaired and repainted. Lake Watcom Boulevard between Cable Street and Strawberry Point in the Lake Watcom watershed will be resurfaced. Further improvements are planned in 2016 to upgrade that area's stormwater system. Also, the new stormwater facility will be constructed along North Shore Drive to infiltrate runoff and reduce phosphorus from approximately 80 acres of residential and forested land near Academy Road. In conjunction with local water resource partners, Phase 1 of the groundwater model will be completed for the Linden, Everson, Nookzak, Sumas area to support water management decisions. Also, a number of significant technology projects are slated for the next two years, including a new stormwater asset management software in Public Works for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase 2 compliance. Also, a replacement of our permit system in the Planning and Development Services and modernizing case management systems for the prosecuting attorney's office, juvenile court, and the district court probation office. The Assessor's Office has moved to the countywide GIS parcel map project to a high priority. This is an integral cornerstone to a multi-departmental unified land records system. A work group of Assessor's Office and Administrative Services Information Technology staff have begun pilot project design and implementation. The enhanced utility of a high-quality digital landmark parcel map will be available for use in every county department. Some of our future initiatives include continued work on our consolidation of county staff into the county-owned facilities in the downtown core. In the short term, this includes the final renovation of the civic building starting this year. The envelope replacement of the county courthouse will need to be completed. I don't anticipate this will begin until the year 2020 to 2021. And the need for the new jail has been determined, and I'm hopeful that the opportunity will be given to the voters to decide if it's time to fix a long-term, wrong-term problem. Our financial status is best described as stable. Revenues and expenses are tracking close to projections for the first few months of this year. The reduction in Canadian visitors will have an impact on our sales tax collection, but we will not experience as big a decrease as the cities, as our sales tax revenue is not as heavily dependent on retail. In what has become a yearly concern, we're waiting for the state to adopt their budget so we will know the status of liquor and marijuana tax funds, human services and criminal justice funds, and road building and environmental funds. Coupled with this is the ongoing challenge from the federal government concerning funding, secure rural schools, and payment in lieu of taxes. It may be later, it may be necessary later this year to make slight budget adjustments in our 2015-2016 biennial budget. In summary, we've moved forward on some very large initiatives. That work will continue. Our superb staff is busy and engaged, along with committed community members on all of our boards and commissions. I appreciate the council's commitment and direction as we work together to build an excellent quality of life for everyone in Watcom County. Thank you for allowing me to present the state of the county to you this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for the executive? All right. Next to order of business is the Watcom County Sheriff, Bill Elfo, is gonna read a proclamation recognizing Police Week, which is this week, and Corrections Week, which was last week.
Mr. Chair and members of the Watcom County Council, thank you for allowing me to be here for a few minutes. The week of May 11th is Police Memorial Week, a time to pay tribute to the law enforcement and corrections officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our country and voice our appreciation and support for those who serve on the front line in the battle against crime. Police Work, Police Week was first recognized in 1961 when President Kennedy's request for recognition was adopted by a joint resolution of Congress. In 1984, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed May as Corrections Officers Month to recognize the important work of corrections officers that often does not receive the recognition from the public it deserves. At the sheriff's office, our corrections and law enforcement deputies, along with our support personnel, function as a team with a vision of providing excellence in public safety and living up to our values of excellence, integrity, and teamwork. Over the past year, law enforcement has been under increased attacks. The number of police officers feloniously killed in 2014 jumped 89% from 2013. Law enforcement around the country has also been subjected to increased criticism. A few members of the public tend to attribute what they perceive as police misconduct in other parts of the country to our local law enforcement community. We should be most proud and appreciative of our law enforcement and corrections officers here in Watcom County that perform their duties with professionalism, distinction, and heroism. This evening, we just completed our semi-annual sheriff's office awards ceremony, and this was an exceptional year. To commemorate Police Work, Police Week, I would like to highlight just a few of the acts performed by our deputies over the past year. A violent and armed felon who threatened neighbors and opened fire on, opened fire on our deputies last November. The deputies put their lives on the line to protect each other and nearby residents. During the incident, one of our deputies was shot in the face by the suspect. Nine deputies this evening were awarded the Distinguished Service Cross for their exceptional bravery despite a known or unknown imminent risk of serious bodily injury or death. Eleven more were awarded meritorious service awards for their actions in this incident, and one was awarded a sheriff's office Purple Heart for the serious injury he received under hostile circumstances. Our crisis negotiation team, made up of law enforcement and corrections deputies, was awarded a unit citation for their efforts in diffusing several volatile situations, often with the dangerously mentally ill. This included a situation where a suicidal suspect was persuaded not to jump off an I-5 overpass onto the freeway, and for successfully negotiating a surrender of a severely mentally ill man who had armed himself with a knife and hammer, called 911 and told the operator that he wanted to kill a, he wanted a deputy dispatch so the deputy could kill him or he could kill the deputy. He spent about an hour and a half talking to him and persuading him to put down the knife and the hammer, and took him to the hospital. Deputies received lifesaving awards this evening also by performing CPR on a young father who was in full cardiac arrest and who has since made a full recovery. For commandeering a citizen's assistance and rescuing a man who was submerged in the Nookzak River after a boating accident. For saving the life of a man who attempted to hang himself in the Watcom County Jail. We should all be very proud of the men and women who put on their uniform and go to work every day on behalf of the citizens of Watcom County, whether it's on the streets or in our overcrowded and unsafe county jail. Last Friday, we honored Watcom County Sheriff's Deputy James Chatfield, who was shot and killed in the line of duty near Blaine on July 29, 1921, during ceremonies that were held at the Washington State Law Enforcement Memorial in Olympia. Deputy Chatfield's name was engraved into the wall honoring those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. His death was lost to the institutional memory of the sheriff's office and was only discovered by a committed research team of citizens who are, who do this type of work. Two of his great-grandchildren were able to attend the memorial. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to recognize all of their dedication and sacrifices during this National Police Work, Police Week, and thank you for supporting the training and equipment that is needed to keep them and our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to your officers for their commendations. We're gonna move right into our public hearing. We have one public hearing this evening. It's a resolution approving an agreement for sale of a license to provide legal property access over county-owned land. And our clerk is picking up the sign-up list, so I will explain the rules while she's bringing it down. I will read the names off the sign-up list. Anybody who's signed up will get three minutes to speak. When you get about 30 seconds left, you'll get a warning that your time's about up. If you have anything to hand out, like I said earlier, if a clerk can get a copy, that would be wonderful. And even if you didn't sign up, everybody will get a chance that wants to. There's only one name on the list, Alexandra King. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and Ms. King, if you wanna start us off, that'd be great. Yes, please. If you can give us your name, if it's more complicated than King, I guess we're probably good to go.
I'm Alexandra King, and I'm a trustee for the Abel Trust, which is at 647 East Laurel Road, and I'm here to ask you to support this license agreement. My understanding is this property was split off from a piece in the front that borders Laurel Road in 1970, and it never had proper access granted, and it's been used, the Abel Pit Road there, which takes that property to Laurel, has been used since 1970, and it's come to our attention that to get a building permit, we have to get proper permission, and so that's why we're here, and we would appreciate your support. That's all.
All right.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, just looking through the documents, Abel is spelled two different ways throughout all of our documents. Is that--
The county.
Okay?
Well, there's, the Abel Trust is the name of the trust that owns the property, but then there's Abel Pit Road, so perhaps--
And they aren't spelled the same?
I, I actually don't know. I'd have to go look at the road sign.
Okay, well, as long as somebody knows that and who prepared these documents, that's the only thing I notice.
Just worried about making the documents legal.
Yeah, I'm not, it's, yes, yeah, I just wanna make sure everything's legal.
Okay, I can look that over. I didn't notice that, but I can--
Yeah, it's spelled A-B-E-L in places and A-B-L-E in other places.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Anything else?
Don't think so, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to us on this resolution this evening?
Andrew Hester, Watcom County Public Works. Just to answer your question, Ken, the gravel pit is spelled A-B-E-L.
Okay.
And, but their trust that they formed, you know, whenever was spelled kind of the correct way the Abel spelled. I think historically, when we acquired it, the family we bought it from was, the last name was Abel, spelled A-B-E-L. So, that's why it's too, it's too different because that's the name of the gravel pit, is Abel Pit.
Just, I just wanna make sure that you are aware of that and the documents are spelled properly before--
Or even our legal caught that first.
Okay. All right, good, thanks.
All right. Anybody else who wants to speak on this resolution?
Hi, my name's Brian Kirkfleet. I'm Alexandra's husband, and I just wanted to point out that the road, for as long as we've lived there, for 20 years, has been paved and been used by sanitary service, utility crews, and treated pretty much like a public road in all sense of the word. It's just there hasn't been a legal access, and we wanna move forward with applying for building permit for the property, and that's why we asked for this. Has a road sign, it gets sealed, just like all the other roads, and, in fact, teenagers go up there and neck in their cars, I mean, so it's--
Well, makes it official.
Yeah. All, all, all public, you know--
You had the votes.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That was the last stride in the voting.
Anybody else? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council? Ms. Brenner?
I'll move approval, but I have some questions for staff.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Ms. Brenner. Go ahead.
Why, why aren't we calling this an easement instead of a license to provide legal access? Isn't it an easement what that is, and don't we usually call them easements?
Sure, I can explain. We, we felt that a license would give the county a little bit more flexibility. A license is a personal right that's just to grant-- A license is a personal right that's just to grant. The individual owners, an easement would stay with the property forever. And we felt to have a little bit more control over that road, because it is an active gravel pit, we would like to have an opportunity, if they sell the property, that we would then renegotiate with the next owners. So that if they plan on, you know, we want to make sure that it's just an access for residential. If they are planning something else, we want to, if things change, we want to be able to change the terms.
Well, I know what the zoning is. What other things could it be used for that would be detrimental to an easement or to our interests?
The other, if, well, if we ever were to sell the property ourselves, that just makes it less attractive to have more, the more easements you have encumbering a property, the less attractive it is as well. The license just gives us, it gives us a little bit more control. It also puts a little bit more protection on us. With an easement, you can't put language in there about, you know, not damaging, and you have to be, you know, they basically have clear use of it. With this license, we put in some hold harmless language to protect us in case they, you know, it's right next to an active gravel pit, you know, this isn't one of those ones that's abandoned. So we still have big, heavy trucks going in there, and so we just want to make sure that, you know, we have all these proper provisions in place. And also, with the license, it's set in a way that if they don't use it after a certain amount of years, say, the properties combine, or they get access off of East Laurel another way, we want to make sure that it, the license is no longer there.
I mean, I can see where the county would want that, but does that, they've been there for 20 years, and it's been used for 20 years. I mean, besides, it seems to me like an easement's a better term, but isn't there that, is it called adverse possession or something that...
Prescriptive rights.
Sure. That's why we were so readily supportive of this. Adverse possession is not something that can be done against public property. But if this was a private situation, yeah, they would have an open and shut case. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but it's pretty clear.
But, okay, one more thing. But the county was the one who originally allowed that to be there. It seems like we do have an obligation.
And that's why we're granting this.
I understand, but...
For no compensation other than just fees.
I'm going to support this, but I'm not sure it's, it's in the best interest of the parties, but if you guys are okay with it, fine.
We also spoke of planning to make sure that they were fine, you know, that this was going to satisfy them as well, and it was.
Well, the owners seem fine with it, so...
Mr. Kremen, is there any comment?
On second thought, I'm going to just be quiet.
Mr. Mann?
I did have a question along those lines, though. If a license sounds less permanent, as you said, based on what you said, than an easement, and that it might just get voided or something if there was a change in ownership, how can we issue a building permit on a property that isn't going to have permanent access?
The language we have in there, all it has is that when the property changes hands, and we also have provisions set, because it's in a trust, we are allowing them that if it just goes to other members of the trust, it just goes, I mean, it doesn't, the license doesn't go away from just that. It would have to be them actually selling to another property owner. And we have language in there where it's just a matter of, we're not going to, we're not saying we're not going to deny it, we just want to review the conditions.
Okay. Yeah, as they said, if they're happy with it, it sounds okay with me.
Yes, we're going to hear from the applicant behind you. We've raised enough issues, she wants to say one more thing.
We would rather have an easement. When I started this process with Mr. Hester, they, he was talking to the county lawyer, and this is what they came up with. But my understanding is that a landlocked piece of a property is illegal, and if the county did grant this to be divided in the first place, I don't understand why it's not being an easement. I would prefer an easement, it makes it a lot easier if you're ever going to sell the property. And perhaps it should be a public road, because people use it like one, so that's all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I guess I was thinking that if I was the landowner, frankly, I would want an easement, and I would try, I'd want us to see, us give them the opportunity of getting an easement. So I'll support this resolution, but I wonder if whether the county, whether there's anything to stop the county from accommodating an easement. Maybe for consideration, because that's usually what an easement entails, is some sort of consideration, but I would encourage it.
Mr. Kremen?
Well, the applicants here obviously would rather have an easement, and we're supposed to be looking out for the best interest of the county. I think for, if we gave them, I think under the, I think under the current proposal, I think you'd get prescriptive rights, but only for the one building unit, and if anything, if it were to be rezoned, or I think you, there would only be that, the one unit. I actually think that, I mean, I hate, we haven't had an opportunity to discuss with our legal department, you know, the rationale and how firm they're, they are on this. I mean, if we were, if we were to arbitrarily make this an easement, the county may not, you know, the administration may not have a, you know, not go along with that. I think we need, if we're going to, if we're going to change the proposal that up until now has been agreed to, or at least that was my impression, I don't think we should tinker with this thing. But if you want to entertain making a fairly significant modification, I think we need to huddle up with legal and the administration and, yeah, before we proceed.
Yeah, it's my understanding that what's in front of us is this license agreement. We can't just arbitrarily call it an easement. So we'd have to turn down the license agreement and then come back with an easement if that's the wishes of the council.
But we don't even know that the applicants here would even, they may be happy enough, I mean, with, they may not want to squirrel this deal. And so, you know, maybe can we get a head nod up?
You didn't know you were going to be negotiating with the whole county council.
We would love to move forward on our project, so if this license could be approved with an understanding that we could come back and ask to turn it into an easement, if your legal department agrees, that would be wonderful. That would be...
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I was listening to what staff said about, you know, that we're going to have big trucks, and we want to be not liable and all that, but it seems like if we did an easement, at the same time, we put in language that's a hold harmless, so that the county wouldn't be on the hook if something, it would be a civil matter if somebody, something happens on that little thing, and a truck dumps gravel on some of these cars, or something like that.
And people have been, I mean, the gravel trucks have been there for probably 50 years, and so have the people that have been accessing that property. So, I mean, it's already happening.
Yeah.
It's the only access to that property, and it has been since 1970.
All right, thank you. Ms. Brown?
Just to respond to Mr. Kremen, I'm not suggesting we do anything on the fly here other than approve or disapprove this. I just encourage the applicants and the county to see if an easement is a more appropriate solution long-term.
And I'm assuming there's nothing that precludes us, if we agree to this license this evening, to talk about an easement at some point in the future. That's, I'm getting a correct head nod there.
Okay.
So we have a motion in front of us to approve this license?
Excuse me, was the public process, was the public room closed?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, we're going to move on to our open session. This is where any member of the public can come and talk to us about whatever they like for three minutes. Same rules apply when you come down. If your name is anything more complicated than King or Smith, spell it for us and give us your name. And everybody gets three minutes, and you'll get a warning at 30 seconds. So who wants to lead off this evening? Go ahead, man.
Well, there we go. My name is Jan Lynn Sherman, and I have a summer home at 4469 Susha Drive in the Sandy Point area of Ferndale. I am discussing the importance of funding for the jail, for the new jail. I am concerned about the growing criminality in the Heights, Sandy Point Heights, which now seems to have moved its base of operation to the West Beach. It is my understanding that the various police agencies have worked hard to interrupt the drug trafficking and the scariness that goes with it, but seem hampered by the fact that there is no way, nowhere to put the apprehended criminals. They are back in the community, continuing their poisonous ways on our children and the adults. This beautiful residential area is under assault, and you have the power to do something about it. I have sat on my patio after midnight and have seen boats coming to shore with no lights being met by others on shore in the dark of night as they unloaded their boat. If these are drugs, and I suspect they are, it is unacceptable. Putting budget dollars into mental health treatment, which is one of the reasons, I think, a sticking point for you, at least that's my understanding, putting budget dollars into mental health treatment is needed and admirable, but it should not take priority over incarceration and rehabilitation of criminals. You might consider the golden rule. Would you want these loser bullies running amok in your neighborhoods? My urgent suggestion: fund the jail, but also have a department where they're there to address mental health issues. This should be a place of both incarceration and rehabilitation. For you to do less is not doing the job to which you were elected. Thank you.
Thank you. We normally don't allow applause and stuff in the...
Sorry, a little bit of emotion.
That's all right, thank you.
Dan McShane, 1451 Grant Street, Bellingham, Washington. Just handing out an article, you don't need to read it now, but I think it kind of fits into something that you are all doing a very good job at struggling with. And that is not just the jail, I think there's a recognition that we've got a pretty lousy jail that needs to be replaced. And I doubt that any of you think differently than that. But as you've been thinking about the jail, you've also had to think about the broad budget and the consequences of building that jail, and can you afford the entire criminal justice package and law and justice package? And the tools for, outside of law and justice, that kind of tamp down the number of people that end up in the system. And it's a kind of, I would hope, no matter how you decide on the jail issue and when it should go to a vote of the people or not, that you keep in mind getting a really good control on the budget matters of law and justice as a whole. And have a really open mind, because there is a lot going on around the country. I meander around a lot in my work, doing fieldwork, I'll have the radio on. So yesterday, as an interview of a district attorney in Milwaukee, in his efforts to reduce the number of people incarcerated, and within his own department, making efforts that were very, very different than what we typically see around the nation. And then this idea in this article here, I think, is a really fundamental problem the United States has, and we have as well. And I see this as an opportunity for you to kind of get out ahead of these things. And that is, we're only one of two countries that require bail. And there's a different way of thinking about these things, and so I would hope that you would take some leadership role on that. And through your leadership, hopefully get the administration and the different administration departments, because it's not just the executive, it's the prosecutor, it's probation, it's the judges, on different approaches that are affordable so that we can have a really good functional system that appropriately addresses whatever activities we're...
30 seconds, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Wendy Harris. I support everything that Dan just said, but I'm here to talk about Lake Wackamie. And some of you heard me talk at the State of the Lake meeting. But I'm very concerned about this change in policy, where we're now treating development in the watershed, new development, as phosphorus neutral, because we have stormwater standards that are updated. And what concerns me about this is we don't have any evidence or any documentation that those stormwater standards are adequate to prevent stormwater runoff in excess of the natural condition. And so I'd like to ask you to ensure that we have some data collection and monitoring in place before we go ahead with a phosphorus-neutral policy for new growth in the watershed. And I don't think it's unconnected that this year, the Lake Wackamie build-out analysis showed there's actually more development going on in the county side of the watershed than has ever been reflected. And as I drive around, I can confirm that's how it appears to me. An additional concern I have is that these homes, these are very, very large homes. They're lovely homes, they're in beautiful locations, they're building up on Squalica Mountain and just places with beautiful views, but it's really not the best thing for the health of our lake and for our water quality that we all rely on. So I'd ask you to consider things like a reasonable footprint on homes, so that if we are going to have homes, I know that there's vested lots out there, let's at least keep them to a reasonable size. And I think that we have sufficient evidence that's developed to show the nexus between impervious surface and water quality. But my primary point is, please don't move forward with this phosphorus-neutral position in the watershed, because it's going to encourage more growth. And I can tell you, as someone who lived on the city side and they enacted their stormwater standards five years ago, we were still having stormwater standards. And if you talk to people in the watershed, it's really hard to get away from stormwater standards. It's a very steep area, there's, you know, it's very rocky, there's not, in some places, there's not a lot of opportunity for infiltration. So I'm just asking you, please, to not do things that incentivize, I know we like that word, let's not incentivize more growth in the watershed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the police. My name is Judy Thelman, I live out at Ferndale, Sandy Point Heights, and I would love to thank the police for all the work, the sheriff department, and even the Wackamie Police for helping us in our area. Tonight, I'm sharing my views, the positive views about the correctional facility, which I think we sorely need. I have to say that drug dealers took over our residential area at Sandy Point Heights a few years ago. It happened so fast, we didn't even realize what was, it just took us by surprise. A few of us have been working with the police for three years, and they finally were able to arrest these people. But now they're out on jail, and they're continuing to sell drugs, and they literally thumb their nose. I've seen them flip the police off as they're walking down the street to their next neighborhood stop. I worked with the undercover police when I lived in Virginia, and I learned firsthand what drug dealers and their culture are all about. Drug dealers make an excellent living perverting local communities. A competent drug dealer can wreak total havoc on a community, keeping the police constantly preoccupied, creating various hotspots where the police have to respond again and again and again, wasting valuable time and resources. These individuals don't need to buy their guns at Jaeger's. The black market has plenty of weapons for them, some of our neighbors witnessed out in the open gun transactions. One of the drug dealers got a gang of kids aged 13 to 17 to break into houses, stealing whatever they could find for the dealers. After my personal experiences living next door to one of them, having my life threatened, being stalked, scary situations to get me to move away from my home, witnessing drug boats also off the Sandy Point shores, as did my friend here, my sister. I want to know and do all I can to protect myself, my family, my neighbors, my county, okay? My parents were pioneers to Wackamie County, and I have a very big vested interest in making sure it stays beautiful in Wackamie County. I see areas of our county quietly kind of crumbling away. Drug dealers are focused on our young people. The future of our society and our young, and our county depends on our young people and on the decisions we older people leave behind for them. Right now, the Russians are dealing with a new street drug that they call crocodile, spelled with a K. And this has young people, they said over a million young people are addicted to this drug, and it's a flesh-eating, instantly addictive drug. And you can go online and look at it, it's spelled with a K, it's like K-R-O-K-O-D-I-L-E. They don't spell it like crocodile like we do, but it's... spell it like crocodile like we do, but it's kind of like that meaning. And you can see images of these kids-
Thirty seconds, please.
-with all these horrible bruises or scars on their arms. So anyway, I've been tutoring and mentoring a couple of high school students, and they shared with me that they know kids who have no regard for education and plan to sell drugs when they get out of high school so they can make a lot of money. So that is kind of where we're at. And I really would appreciate you guys really listening to what I said, because our future is with our kids. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Joy Gilthelen, and I was here this afternoon and listened to some of the testimony and some of the conversation about the sales tax initiative, how much money it's gonna cost us a billion dollars over the next thirty years just on one of the one percent figures. And I discovered that we have right now, it sounds to me like we're gonna have almost four percent in point zero four percent or whatever. One percent is already going to corrections. A percentage of another percent is going to corrections. Then we're gonna levy two more percent on corrections, one of which is gonna continue into perpetuity. So we're gonna have point zero two percent, if I understand correctly, going in perpetuity to corrections costs, and specifically the jail operations. I think it's very astute to be aware of the fact that the hundred and twenty-two point five million that is a capital asset expenditure against the taxpayers is a lot of capital cost upfront. If the economy continues to tank for the middle and the lower classes, your tax base is not here to be able to generate the revenue to continue to pay for everything that we're gonna be in. And what we've just done, if you guys move that initiative forward as delivered, is you're gonna put the county in an extreme financial blind and not be able to help with all of the other crisis issues that are likely to come down the road. We do have a climate crisis. Many people pretend that it isn't there. I just flew over the country from here to California, and I can say, we're going to have a lot of climate refugees dealing with water crisis and food crisis and resources. Watcom County has some of the most valuable resources in the nation. But if what you do is we end up bankrupting the county over a liability, the prosecutor said that it's an asset, well, assets are either alligator-type assets or actually capital-producing assets. And they either generate revenue, and they either help the taxpayers, or they consume revenue. So the revenue consumption that comes in, and the consumption of capital assets and operating costs from the taxpayers, if we don't have a basis to generate cash for the little people of the community, we will not have the revenue coming in to be able to pick up the destruction from state and national budgets. I don't know if I'm making myself very clear here, because it's a very complex subject, but I've been in free enterprise for years. One of the things that the Restorative Community Coalition is going to be doing over the next year-
Thirty seconds, please.
...is working to generate a five million dollar funding package to produce five different kinds of projects, a Freedom Gardens, a Restore Life Center, a reclaimed store, all of which are intended to help rebuild our basic fundamental needs for the community, so that we can reduce the inflow of low-end and moderate people into the jail system, which is a high-expense, high-cost item. And I heard you, Barbara, say that you didn't understand the loss. I'd like to talk about economics at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't say I didn't understand the loss. I didn't say loss.
You can talk later.
Max Perry, Watcom County. Observation that the jail issue has real similarities to the packing house issue, that took three years and was passed with not being able to do the job for it. So I would encourage you to not let it go in that direction. But I'd like each of you to envision that you've gone to a birthday party for a son, a wife, a daughter, whatever, and you've traveled some miles to take in this birthday party. You've locked up your house, you've secured everything, just like you normally do, and you go to the birthday party and travel the distance. You come back home, it's about eleven-thirty at night when you come home, and the first thing you notice is that the house isn't quite like you left it. There's a screen off, there's some frozen food laying by one of your entry doors. So then you, things start to tinkle. So you go in your house and see what's going on, see what's happening, what's missing. You think you've probably been cleaned out, you've probably, probably everything that you've got. But you don't see anything when you go in the downstairs. Your bedrooms are upstairs. So you decide, well, I better go upstairs and see what's going on up there, what's happened up there. As you go up, something tinkles in your mind, you know, I'll grab a aluminum rod that the wife hangs up clothes with on it. It's got a hook on it, and it's substantial. So you go upstairs, and your first thing you notice is that your bedroom, which you normally have open, is about three-fourths shut. It's closed. So you know that's not right. So you go in there and you shove the door back, and here's a guy behind your door in your bedroom. And you go in there, and the guy has also found your pistol that you've got stored up in your, that you had stored up in your upper closet. And he's got that pistol, your nine millimeter pistol, and he's pointing it at you and saying, freeze, freeze. So you got an instant to do something. You do, you just react. You don't, you don't think, you don't, you just, your family's downstairs, your wife's downstairs, and you think, things can't get too, too good out of this. So you hit the guy. And luckily, he hadn't found the ammunition, he just had the pistol, but he hadn't found the ammunition.
Thirty seconds, please.
And you whale on him, you hit on him, you got, he dashed it down the stairs, out the front door and away. The wife calls, she says, would you like to call nine-one-one? Yes, please. So you call the sheriff, and right away, you got three deputies that are there within, it seemed like five minutes, but it's probably longer than that, but it was, it was quick. They came there, they asked me what was going on, what was happening on-
Time.
-they brought a K-9 in, and they searched that. So anyway, long and short of it is, the guy was found, the pistol was returned, and this can happen. This can happen anywhere in Watcom County. So there's probably, I don't know what his, what his thinking was, I don't know what his mental capacity was or anything else, but I do know that he was threatening. And it was, it was real.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else during the open session? See no one, I'm gonna close the open session.
Mr. Chair, the finance- These items both were moved for approval with a vote of three to zero, and I say move.
All right, we have the motion on the consent agenda. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, as you're aware, we had two discussions on items related to the jail, but I think they were put on, put off for further discussion later. So it's no addition to, nothing in addition to report.
All right, moving on to natural resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This morning, we had before us a resolution designating Portage Bay as a marine recovery area. The committee voted two to zero to approve with council members to do absent, and I say move.
All right, we have that motion in front of us. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Back to finance.
Mr. Chair, there was an item, a request for approval for an inter-local agreement between the City of Bellingham and Watcom County for the Division of Emergency Management Services EMS Assets and Liabilities. This was discussed in committee and moved for approval with a vote of three-zero, and I say move.
All right, we have that motion on that agreement in front of us. Any discussion? Questions? See none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're on to council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. And the first one is an appointment to the Surface Mining Advisory Committee of Geologist Position Applicant, Lenny Bennett. Motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval.
All right. Mr. Brown has moved to appoint Ms. Bennett. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And then there's an appointment to the Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee Alternate, Michael Schoenfeld, to the Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee Geographic Representative.
Mr. Chair, I move approval.
Mr. Brown has moved approval of the appointment. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. We are on to our introduction items. We have four introduction items this evening.
Move acceptance.
All right, we have all four moved for acceptance. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, other committee reports. Was there anything else in finance?
Nothing from, nothing other than what I said.
All right, anything else in public works?
We continued a discussion on a resolution to ensure that we have robust diversion services to be done in a way that they will be in existence when the jail is open, so that we're not gonna be having to trade one for the other.
All right.
But we're not done yet.
Anything from planning?
We continued our discussion about vacation rental by owner properties and whether or not some sort of registration or permitting situation should be implemented on those. And we especially talked about the Lake Watcom watershed and whether or not we would have different regulations there. And we're still just taking our time on this one. We want to get it right, and it's still in committee.
All right. Any other committee? I don't think, was there anything else in natural resources? No, we've covered it. All right, is there other items of business to be acted on this evening? See none. I think we're on to council member updates. We'll start with Mr. Brown.
I'll just speak as a member of the Flood Control Zone Board. There are a number of opportunities to serve. With the appointment of Michael, sorry, with the latest appointment, we have no alternates, and I would encourage anybody who's interested in serving on this to consider joining the board as an alternate.
All right, Mr. Buchanan?
Nothing.
Mr. Mann?
I just would highlight the report we got today in Finance Committee from Recreation Northwest. They were part of a study that was done by an economist group. They identified that in Watcom County, we have two-hundred-and-seventy-nine recreational businesses, creating three-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-eight jobs and five-hundred-and-eight million dollars in revenue to Watcom County for recreational tourism and recreation businesses. So I thought that was very impressive, and it was a very, very interesting report.
Ms. Brenner?
I'd just like to remind council members and anybody else who's listening, there's an upcoming woods tour put on by the Women in Timber, and it's really an amazing event. You get to go, every year it's different, but you get to go and watch different operations, different forestry operations. And I think people would be very impressed at what a, we have a great forestry industry in Watcom County. And, you know, it's, it's kind of like I hear it with the farmers sometimes, but the foresters too. It's so easy to criticize, but most of the foresters live here in Watcom County. If they don't take care of the forest, they don't have their jobs for very long. So it's in their interest, even if they didn't care about the environment, and I believe most of them do, but they, what's really important is that they know that this is their livelihood, and they're, they're gonna be very proactive in protecting our natural resource. So this is, this is, and there is no video or anything you can watch that will substitute for this. So I just get tired of people mouthing opinions that are detrimental to the forestry industry. And if you're gonna do that, at least go on this tour. I think you'll be very impressed. So hopefully, council members will go.
All right, Mr. Cremmon.
Thank you. And by the way, the woods tour begins at eight o'clock, and you all go on a bus, and it is a really informative time.
And they feed you?
They do feed you, but you spend a lot of time out in the woods with people who know what happens out there. And it is a perspective that I think all council members should get so that we can make better informed decisions regarding forest practices in Watcom County. You know, I was gonna talk about the Washington State Association of Counties' annual board meeting and planning meeting that we just had last week. But, and it's not that late, so maybe I will elaborate a little bit. We made a lot of progress. We, it was pretty well-attended. Most of the counties were represented. And we spent a lot of time on how to make the association more influential and potent in Olympia, and I thought we made a lot of headway. Also, I've learned that the association has been working hard and effectively in coming to a, an agreement, near an agreement with the Washington State Realtors Association for the flexibility with REIT funding. So stay tuned. Nothing has been finalized, because they're in special session right now, and most of the legislators, with the exception of a few members of leadership, are not even in town, because they're, they're basically in what they call a rolling recess. But I think that, that that particular issue is gonna bear some fruit. At least we're hopeful and somewhat optimistic that we're gonna strike an agreement so that counties throughout Washington State are gonna be able to have a little more flexibility with how we utilize REIT funding.
Great, thank you.
I just wanna add what Cannon said, that this is a kind of, we have best-kept secret of our recreation industry. And it was really a big eye-opener to hear that so many companies, so many jobs, and such a revenue, which is an asset for our county, and we should use that to, to bring more businesses showing that advantage. I think it's a great asset we have. Thank you, thank you.
All right, Ms. Brenner?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't know if I said this. Members of the public are also invited on the woods tour. So I hope lots of people RSVP.
Yeah. All right. And I just wanted to say, I know there's been a lot of interest in the proposed jail and in the criminal justice system as a whole. And the county council members have asked a number of questions. The city council members have asked a number of questions, and there's a lot more information kind of being developed, the answers to those questions. And I think most of that's been posted on the executives', if you go to the executives' website and look for the new jail, you'll find a lot of that new information that's been kind of coming in over the last couple of weeks. So encourage people to take a look and let us know what you think. Anything else for the good of the order? See nothing? We're adjourned.